Welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of February 25th, 19... 19? Oh, time flies when you're having fun. 2013, all rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time for the Revere City Council panel request on cell phones or telephones.
And ladies and gentlemen, before you sit down, if I may, we have a couple issues we'd like to address and we need everybody standing. I'm going to call on Councilor Bob Haas first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we lost a great person that really worked for the city of Revere. Her name was Adele Turo. She passed away in Florida. And as you know, she was an active activist here in Revere. As an activist, she was surely missed for her involvement in quality of life issues, the city of Revere, and the way we responded to issues of the day. Adele will be surely missed. As we all know, in the '80s, Adele from North Revere getting involved in an awful lot of issues in Revere: billing, moratoriums, et cetera. And without question, it was because of her efforts, I believe. It really helped the city in zoning and just her presence before the city council at various times. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for Adele. She will be greatly missed by all of us. Thank you.
May I like to ask Councilor Zimbardo for a few words?
Thank you. I just want to add a little bit to Adele Turo, who was a friend of mine and, more importantly, a friend of the city of Revere. She was obviously a community activist from North Revere. She was a strong advocate to Franklin Park Civic Association in the interest of the people of North Revere. She came before the council many times and on their behalf. She opposed the location of various things in Rose Quarry, not especially the sludge plant that was proposed there. And she was one of the leading proponents on the designation of the Remney Marsh as an area of critical environmental concern, which protects Remney Marsh from any future development. So I'm going to miss her and I think the city of Revere will miss her. Thank you.
And if I may, also call on Councilor Zimbardo for Peter Brandano.
Thank you. Revere lost another great person, Peter Brandano, who was not only a wonderful person, a businessman in the city, proprietor of Brandano's Bakery, former city councillor, World War II veteran, member of all the clubs: the Moose, the American Legion, Sons of Italy. But more importantly, he really loved Revere and bled Revere. And he was a dear friend of mine. I'm going to miss him and I'm sure the city of Revere will miss him too. Thank you.
And if we'll have our moment of silence for our two departed friends. May their souls rest in peace. Maybe seated.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here. Councilor Creggio.
Here.
Here. Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here. Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here. Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here. Councilor Patches. Absent. Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here. Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here. Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here. Councilor Zimbardo.
Here.
Here. And Council President Novosinski. Here. A quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting held on February 11th, 2013. Calendar item number one. Mayor Rizzo will issue a proclamation to Jared Barrios, CEO of American Red Cross for Massachusetts White Ribbon Day.
Mr. President, thank you very much. If I could call the Senate up here. My good friend, our old friend, Jared Barrios. Jared, first off, I want to thank you for being here. And I want to thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, those of you in attendance, for participating in the Massachusetts White Ribbon Day. This is a partnership between Jared Barrios and District Attorney Dan Connolly, where Massachusetts, along with the city of Revere, is recognizing Massachusetts White Ribbon Day as a day where we collectively get together and stand up against domestic violence. And so, Revere doing its little part in this has prepared a proclamation that I'd like to read now to you, Jared. It is a proclamation, "Whereas the majority of women and men in our community are deeply concerned about the pressing problem of violence against women, sexual assault, and domestic violence; and whereas the many cultures represented in our community are all affected, including heterosexual, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals, communities of color, immigrants, the youth, the aged, the infirm, and the differently abled; and whereas the White Ribbon Day campaign believes that the majority of men wish to make a positive contribution towards ending this violence; and whereas our municipality wishes to take tangible steps to raise awareness and to support survivors and hold offenders accountable in our community, along with other municipalities across the Commonwealth; and whereas the White Ribbon Day pledge states, 'From this day forward, I promise to be a part of the solution in ending violence against women.' And whereas the White Ribbon... I'm sorry. Now therefore, I, Mayor Daniel Rizzo, Mayor of the city of Revere, do hereby proclaim March 7th, 2013 as White Ribbon Day and urge all citizens of Revere to recall the significance of the white ribbon, which is to end violence against women, sexual assault, and domestic violence, and the many cultures that represent our community, including the heterosexual, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals, communities of color, immigrants, the youth, the aged, the infirm, and the differently abled. Signed by our city clerk, Ashley Melnick, and myself, Mayor Dan Rizzo." Thank you very much. I would thank you. You can sign a quick word. Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. And Honorable Mayor, it's a pleasure to be back in Revere. It's been a while since I've been here with all of you. As you know, I'm currently the CEO of the American Red Cross here in eastern Massachusetts, but I'm not here in that capacity today. I'm here as the co-chair of the White Ribbon Campaign along with our district attorney in Suffolk County, Daniel Connolly. We are chairing the campaign. And some of you may ask, why are men chairing a campaign about violence against women? It's about women, right? Well, no, actually. This campaign is about highlighting that the perpetrators of violence against women are men and that men have a role in stopping that violence and saying no to that, in changing the public attitudes that have said for so many generations, "It's okay," or "We're not going to talk about it," or "We understand." We don't understand. We're not going to tolerate it and we're going to end it. And that's what this campaign is about. It's one day a year where we're going to recognize it. We ask the gentlemen to wear the white ribbons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for wearing yours. We've got one for you and for the council. And what we would like to do is what we're asking other communities to do, what Revere has already done, is recognize that day as White Ribbon Day, March 6th. And we're really appreciative of all that Revere is doing. We're going to be in Chelsea and Everett tonight as well. We're asking every community to do that, really to take a stand, and every day, to take a stand against domestic violence against women. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. President. Thank you, Jared.
That's for you. My pleasure.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Calendar item number two: Joint Meeting of the Utility Companies.
Okay. We have Stan Jusovich and Tim. I want you both to come forward. So, oh, Dan's here too? Holy cow. Name and address for the record, my friend.
Stan Jusovich, Verizon, with offices at 63 High Street in Davis. Mr. President, since Dan is here and he's pulled the latest report, I'm going to ask him to just give you an update on those.
Good evening. Dan Cameron from National Grid with offices in Malden. And my plans did change, so I was able to make it this evening. But, um, thank you. We certainly have the bulk of the polls now. They're in our queue. We will be moving on this, starting as soon as the weather breaks, probably late March, early May. I mean, yeah, late March, early April. We have a lot of, fortunately, we have a lot of doubles and triples on the same street, residential streets. Shouldn't be too much to transfer them. And we have recently done an audit on all these polls that are in our queue. So we know the list is accurate as far as what's out there. And we'll be, look to be hitting this pretty hard, like I said, starting late March, early April.
Councilor Creggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for coming before us. You guys have been doing a tremendous job. I just got a couple calls on the area of Pomona Street and Revere Street, double pole. I know the weather's been bad. Can you give us a little status report on that location? Pomona and Revere Street.
Revere Street, I can see there's quite a few. About eight or nine here. Again, that's, when we have situations like that, once we get going there, it actually goes pretty quickly because the crew will stay right on that street. Pomona, I'm not familiar with. I don't see that on the list.
It's across from the Bonfide Gil Funeral Home.
Is it across the street? Would it be...
Right across the street. So I'm just using that cross street as a general...
Oh, it's on Revere Street as well?
Right. It's actually on Revere Street.
Okay.
And the other location is Charger and Malden Street. One of the poles is leaning. I don't know if it's attached properly, reinforced properly.
All right. That's in the hands of the city. That's in the fire alarm's court right now.
Fire alarm?
It's three on Malden Street.
Right. Is there any way that you can contact them or do you keep in contact with the fire department?
I can't say that we do.
Typically, Councilor, we've had communication with all the utilities. We do work off the same sheet in terms of PLM. So there is an awareness. And I did speak to the President earlier today. There's greater emphasis now on the city side to address some of those issues with fire alarm. So we can expect some of those to move. And I think on those two cases, we know where they are.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor, just as an FYI, I did, I sent everybody a copy of the double pole list by email when I got it from Stan, and I thank him for that. But I also did forward a copy to the chief and to Dan Connolly, so they are aware of things that are going on. And hopefully, they'll be able to touch base with some of these issues. Okay? Thank you. Counselor Penta.
Just two questions. Stan, did you relay that information to Dan?
I've got it written down and I will make sure that Dan gets the two streetlights.
I appreciate it because one is actually in front of Mr. Kelly's house, one's in front of mine, and a couple other ones. But as long as you pass along. Wasn't sure he was showing up. But the other question I have is, that list of double poles, probably 80% of the fire department hasn't gotten theirs yet. Once the fire department calls you and lets you know that they're the last ones that moved that wire, how long after that does it take to take that pole down?
Well, typically, what happens is, once the fire alarm moves, it goes into the ball and court of cable. So Comcast would get it. Then once Comcast moves on it, then Verizon would get it. So there's, it's, you know, it's a shared responsibility and it's difficult to coordinate. And it's nearly impossible for me to stand here and tell you this will happen at a particular time. I think Council Power is going to attest to that, but...
Well, let me just maybe rephrase that because some of them are just waiting for fire. My thing is, when the last wire is off the pole, how long then does it take to take the pole down?
Well, sure.
Tim Kelly, Comcast. We have a dedicated project coordinator that, for the city of Revere. So we check the PLM weekly. So as long as fire is updating, we will find, we will see that on a weekly basis. And then we'll be able to assign the appropriate resources to get moving on those transfers.
All right. I'm still not getting my answer. Last wire taken off the original pole, no more wires on it. How long does it take to get that out of the ground?
Well, typically, what happens is, we are the last wire and we also have the set. So we will take the pole as we take the...
At that time?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Guanasso.
First of all, Mr. President, I'd like to publicly thank you for your communication regarding the double poles. Having said that, I know as recent as last week, we had an incident on Hutchinson Street, adjacent to American Legion Highway, where an auto went into one of the poles. And now at the end of Hutchinson Street, right next to Cataldo Ambulance Service, there's a double pole there. So I want you to add that to the list because that should be very important because that adds to the obstruction of that. And that's a very, very heavily traveled area. And we don't need another pole to take away the good vision of the drivers because it's an intersection that traffic, coming out of a bruisey street, coming down Hutchinson Street, and then going in a gnarly direction on the American Legion Highway. It's a good mixture for an accident to happen. And it's a very, very heavily trafficked area.
There are currently two poles listed. We'll send a...
This is brand new. This happened last week, so I'm sure it's not on your list.
So we'll send someone out to make sure it's on the list.
And on that list still is the ones on Revere Street and in Martin Street and all those adjacent streets off of Revere Street that we are going to get...
Martin Street was placed on just after you had received the update. So that's on. Our crews have gone out to take a look at it and see what they can schedule for work.
And Revere Street also, from the Parvius School.
On Revere Street, there is now, because Comcast had moved off of 15 of their poles, there's one ball and court, which is the, I believe, the one by Roosevelt School.
That's the one we're pretty interested in too. Again, it's a heavily trafficked area based on the fact that the people are bringing their children to the Parvius School and that's the major entrance to go to that school site. So any impaired vision is an accident waiting to happen. Thank you. I appreciate it, Stan. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Well, Councilor Guanasso kind of just asked my question. It was the Parvius School one that I brought up before school started. So if that can be addressed as soon as possible, we'd appreciate it. Anything in the school zones, I always cannot worry about because you get a lot of kids walking and if you can't see, it's dangerous. So thank you, Councilor Guanasso. Thank you.
Councilor Haas.
Thank you. Dan, on Einstein Street, they put up four new poles. They were double poles, so it's great. But the problem is, on the full poles, three of them, the lights have basically faulted. They're not illuminated. Now, we were not aware you were coming up this evening, so Ashley emailed you.
I saw the email just before I got here. Okay.
So how long does it normally take to have the...
We can get them this, yeah, wood pole. We'll get them this week.
Thank you.
Councilor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had emailed you guys a couple weeks ago about a couple of poles. And there were two on Salem Street that weren't double poles. They were, they had some wires hanging. One was by a school bus stop and another one was in front of Rose Quarry, the Rose Quarry area. And it looked like the support was not, there was like a support pole that had been broken. So I just wanted to check in on those.
Sure, Counselor. We actually, we sent Comcast sent a crew out, I believe, on the 13th, the same day, actually, the day after we received the email. A lot of the transfers that have to happen on Salem Street specifically have to be by the fire department. There are fire alarm on those right now. The other, Clifton Street, I believe that's Comcast ball and court. And we have that in our queue to take care of. But we weren't able to identify which wires were the hanging wires. We don't touch other utilities' wires. Could be a mid-fiber carrier. It could have been the old fire alarm. I don't have confirmation on that.
When do you think we could have confirmation?
When we go, I can send my guys back out there to verify, you know, that they're not our wires.
Okay. I'm just, for me, the priority would be the one with, by the school bus stop.
Yeah. Now, I'll work closely with National Grid and Verizon to make sure we have open communication. We know that we're all talking off the same page.
Great. Thank you.
Councilor Zimbardo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is getting to be a monthly thing, that I throw bouquets at these guys, but I think it was 10 or 12 years ago I put in a double pole ordinance. And I really never dreamed we'd reach this stage of cooperation, that we're really making progress. Things are really getting done in the way of double poles. And I'm just thrilled. So I just want to, again, thank you, gentlemen, for the spirit of cooperation. We finally got what we all hoped for. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I've spoken to you gentlemen last week on the phone, so I sent you a new email today about some sidewalks that were dug up.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, and if you worked on those streetlights that we talked about, appreciate that. But I thank you guys for coming up. I think, you know, the program is working a lot better, that we have a better communication amongst everybody. And next month, we're going to give you a month off, so you don't have to come in March. So we'll see you in April. Yeah. But, you know, it's only a couple weeks. We have a couple more meetings. In the last two weeks in March, we're not meeting. So we'll see you in April. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of good comments from you folks and the list will be nice and low and we won't have to bother you that much.
Mr. President, before you give anybody the month off...
Council Powers.
Dan, you have about three poles down on Calumet Street. Can you give me an idea when they might be removed?
We should be able to get to those during March. Yeah.
By the end of March?
Yeah.
Probably? Okay. That works.
I mean, unless we get hit with some really, really bad...
Stan, I just have one question for National Grid. Do you, your organization, work in conjunction with DCR with regard to, there's probably about eight or nine lights that are out down on the Linway over at the Jim Rivers Bridge?
We do. Is this, you're talking on the Revere side, obviously?
Yeah, I'm talking on the Revere side. The, where you come off of 1A, onto the Linway there. There's three or four out. There's three or four out on top of the bridge and there's a couple of others. So you've probably got a total of maybe eight, nine lights out down there. And I'd like to know what plans are in progress with DCR. I know, I'm told that they need a police detail down there when they do those lights. And it takes, it takes time. You know, they don't want to send a police detail down for one light. But I mean, it's pretty dark down there at night in that Point of Pines area.
I'll look into that. But as long as there's no damage to the light itself, because if there's damage to the base of it, that's when the DCR gets in. But these are just standing poles.
I don't see any damage. And I really don't think there could be...
It's our responsibility.
Eight or nine that are damaged at the base. So I'd like to, you know, see if we can get them down.
Sounds like there's a...
There's an awful lot.
There's a circuit out. Yeah. If they're in a row.
Maybe we'll correct it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll see you after Easter. Have a good Easter.
Okay.
Believe it or not. Next item.
Calendar item number three: Hearing called is ordered upon the application of Lighthouse of Revere, Inc. for a permit to construct a three-story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming use as a nursing home within the RB district at the premises located at 204 Proctor Avenue.
Okay. We'll start with proponents. I'd like to just let everybody know that we allow five minutes for presentation, realizing this is going to go into a subcommittee afterwards, so, which most of the detail will go into. So if you can just give an overview of today and take your five minutes, I appreciate it. We'll open it up to proponents. Name and address for your record, please. You're first.
Bill Rich, Nine Woodbury Drive, Beverly, Mass. Good evening. I am here tonight for the team representing Lighthouse Nursing Care Center. After receiving our special permit, we started to rethink our construction project to ensure that we would think of the future needs of your citizens. We look at the commitment to the citizens of Revere and the surrounding communities for the future of health care in general. We need to think of today's needs as well as tomorrow's future needs. What we are asking is to go with the same footprint as originally proposed, but to make the height of the addition the same as the existing building. The top floor will be the rehab area, not in the lower level as planned, giving us room for the future. The impact of these changes we are requesting will not increase the number of beds, but it would impact the quality of life for our current residents and now the needs of the Revere senior citizens in the future. I will now turn this over to Anthony from the architectural team. We'll go over in brief detail the plans. Thank you.
Anthony Viverido, 50, Commandant's Way in Chelsea. I'm the architect for this project from the architectural team. We had received, earlier this summer, we'd received our request for continuation of the non-conforming use for the addition that we're putting on the, on Lighthouse at Revere. We asked tonight that, we have some new boards to show you. We'll just quickly go over them. This is the Proctor Ave elevation perspective. And the corner of the building here, we've added a third floor. The client had asked for space for PT and OT, physical therapy, occupational therapy, additional space, and what they currently have. And the natural conclusion was to add another floor to the addition. So we're here tonight with revision to that two-story piece. And the, again, this is a Proctor Ave elevation showing the three-season porch that we'll have in the front of the building. As you can tell by the renderings, I think a lot of folks are going to be surprised when they see the finished product. The building is going to be updated. And it's desperately in need of some improvement, both on the outside and programmatically on the inside. We ask that you extend the non-conforming use. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents for this project? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none. I'll close that portion of the hearing. I would remind the councilors that this will be going into subcommittee. I would ask that you keep your comments at a very minimum because we'll be repeating... I would ask that you keep your comments at a very minimum, because we'll be repeating ourselves more than once before the final vote when it comes up in April. So Counselor Zimburo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be really brief, and every time Lighthouse comes before us, I feel the need to remind everybody that Lighthouse Nursing Home is one of the premier nursing homes in the state. And in my almost 14 years as a city councillor, the most calls I ever get is for people wanting to help their loved ones to get into the best nursing home in the state. So anything we can do to help them, help our citizens, I'm for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Crigill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be in favor of this project. The Lighthouse Nursing Home, as you well, now have served the city of Revere very well, and anything I can do as a councillor to improve the quality of life of patients in there would be tremendous. They took care of my mother. I can't even speak. I mean, the service that they provided was just really tremendous, and so this is excellent for the city of Revere. They're doing a facelift, which they're going to redo the front of the building and add the second floor on, or third floor, I should say. So I'd be very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Redden, Ward Four, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions, fellows. If you could... how long do you anticipate the construction phase of this project to last, and when do you think it will be starting, and assuming you get approval?
We'd like to start this spring. We anticipate submitting for a permit at the end of March. The DPH submission has not been made, which is a requirement for the addition, so there is a chance that we would apply for the permit first, and then hopefully get the DPH approval shortly thereafter. The construction duration is roughly 14 months, and that's largely because there are some renovations that we're doing in the second floor, where we're decompressing that wing of the building and adding some bathrooms, so there'll be some shuffling of the residents there.
And through you, Mr. President, do you anticipate any severe disruption to the traffic flow in the neighborhood, as well as other infrastructure issues in the neighborhood?
Well, I can't, as I'm representing the architecture firm that's doing this work, the contractor that we've engaged, Nauset Construction, whose specialty is nursing homes, one of their specialties, they'll have to prepare a sort of mitigation plan. They'll develop a construction schedule, a CMP plan, that will be reviewed with, I'm sure, the abutters and anyone else who's interested in knowing what's going on.
Do you think it would be possible to have them appear before the subcommittee meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I think we'd like to have them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Cole, any of the councilors? Counselor Gwinassow, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The lower end of Proctor Ave is an area of Ward Three, which I represent, and the question posed by Counselor Redden, it makes all the sense in the world that they be there to make testimony to the fact that, you know, what kind of an impact is this going to make on the neighborhood in terms of construction? And so you're coming into the spring season of the year, and that's when most people will be out enjoying their properties or getting ready to enjoy their properties, so we want to make certain that the impact on the neighborhood is as little as possible if, in fact, the proposal does get approved. It's very important, because the construction period of any area, it could be mind-boggling. I've experienced that for the last five, six years now in the end of Revere Street that's been under construction for all those years, and it's painstaking. It takes a lot out of neighbors and neighborhoods, because they have to experience these trucks and the inconvenience of traffic, additional traffic to the area. So I'll be speaking on this further when we have the subcommittee meeting in a more informal session, and so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Just as an FYI, I hope Counselor Redden, we won't be having any meetings, regular meetings, until April 8th, after the March meetings, so just play... spread your committee meetings out appropriately.
Yeah, I'm anticipating that it will be later rather than earlier on all these applications because of some upcoming issues we have. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Hearing, no other comments, I'm going to give this to the zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered upon the application of Kids Only After School, seeking a special permit to construct a second-floor addition and to change the use of the existing structure to enable the appellant to operate an after-school program facility on Lot 66C and Lot 67 at 85 Broadway.
Gentlemen, I'll give you the same speech. Again, make it no more than a five-minute presentation. It will be going into subcommittee from here, which Counselor Redden will chair at a future date, so he can give us an overview of it, and so that I'm sure... is everybody here for this particular hearing? Yes, okay, good, just wanted to know. Thank you. Glad we have some interested citizens, thank you very much. Name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Sean Donahue. My office is at 88 Black Falcon Avenue in Boston. I represent the applicant in this matter for Kids Only After School, Inc. We're here on an application for special permit at 85 Broadway, the property known as 85 Broadway in Revere. There are some photographs that are in the application, I believe, but for those who wish to see, the property is a corner lot located at the corner of Broadway in Revere Beach Parkway. It's a large lot, 10,711 square feet of land, which falls in the general business zoning district. It's located adjacent to both commercial and residential properties. Many, if not most, of the buildings in and around that neighborhood are at least two to two and a half stories high. Several buildings along Broadway exceed two and a half stories, including, I know it's 385 Broadway, and I believe it's 176 Broadway, which is a residential condominium. But in any event, 85 Broadway, as you know, is situated adjacent to Route 16, which provides easy access to this particular lot. What we have for is, we're seeking to put a second-story addition on the property, we're, I guess, creating an alteration to an existing non-conforming property. The nonconformity with this property is that it fails to meet the minimum setbacks. I have the architect with me, if we may have a few minutes for him to sort of give you an overview of what it is that we're proposing.
My name is Manny Tavares. So basically what we're proposing is a modern building.
Would your address and company, please?
MJ Tavares Architects, Lynnfield, Mass.
Thank you.
So basically what we're doing is taking the... putting a second floor on this building that's originally there, and we're doubling a little bit over the space that's there now. And again, this, like Sean said, we're basically renovating the bottom part and adding the second floor to it, and the occupancy would be based on about 120 kids, eventually, but we're not going to get that high at the time, so it's going to go to a time, and eventually that will be changed, you know, based on how kids come in. This will be the parking area of the left. You can see the building is this part right here, which is original, existing footprint. We have some green space on this side and the parking area here. We're just basically using... the existing area to the right is actually parking right now, so we're going to take it and use it as a green space. Aside from that, we have... I'm sorry. Maybe I should just hold this up. So basically, this is the existing building. We've got some parking that's now adjacent to the building, that'll become green space. This is the existing parking lot, as it is. And aside from that, the entry here with the issue of the building will be about here, and then another exit here, some other exit over here. We're using... putting an elevator in, so it's going to be a modern, you know, most up to date building as far as construction is concerned. I mean, so I think the picture kind of tells everything there.
Mr. Chairman, we have some materials that we'd like to submit to supplement the application. Most notably, put together a booklet. I have one for each of them. Yes. I have copies for each of the members. I think you might need more, Ashley. Within that booklet, there's an explanation as to who we are. For Kids Only has been an existing business in several communities. Their principal office is located in Salem. They've done business here in the city of Revere before. Essentially, in the after-school program, if I may just briefly touch upon it, we have one of the principals of the program here. She can explain to the council what the program is about.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Debbie Nealon Keegan, and I'm the executive director for Kids Only After School Programs. I have to say, my roots are from Revere, Mass. My father is Joe Grasso. He graduated class of 1946, and my father should be very proud right now of this moment in time, because he was a man that always stood for the health and safety and betterment of children in his city, so I'm proud to be here today. We are a public charity that was founded in 1984 by myself and a public school teacher, and the mission of For Kids Only is to expand learning opportunities for children, support working families. We particularly... we have funding from the United Way Mass Bay, we're a United Way affiliate. We have department... funding from the Department of Early Education and Care, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and many other private foundations to support our work. Here in the city of Revere, we've been a partner in the city since 1998. We've partnered with the city, and we've also partnered very closely with the public schools. We had a small building on Broadway that closed down four years ago because we had grown out of it. Our capacity had grown so large that we needed to look for another space, and for the last several years, we have been seeking space and found this facility this year in October, this past year in October. We service children in grades kindergarten through eight. We offer homework help, active, physical activities. We have... this new facility will be completely Wi-Fi. It'll have computers and technology. We'll have spaces for not only physical activity, but we'll have a STEM room for science, technology, engineering, and math. We'll also have a room for the arts, the creative movements, yoga and dance. And our intention really is to increase the youth in the city's knowledge about health and fitness, and to prevent that risky behavior that we see happening later on in their years. We really want to empower these children, build self-confidence and self-esteem, so later on, they can say no to those risky behaviors that we see sometimes taking on. We also want to support working families. We would like to be able to support the families and support academic growth in that same breath. And finally, we want to keep children safe and off the streets. So if I have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
One thing I want to just stress just briefly is that this is an educational program. It's a licensed program through the state of Massachusetts. It's a childcare facility, or will be licensed as a childcare facility pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 15D, Section 1A, as it's defined therein. So with that being said, I...
Thank you very much. We still are in the hearing portion of this, and I know everybody's here for this, but without having everybody come up, because I know it'll be a long night if we did, if you want to bring up one person to represent everybody, if you're in favor of it, I invite you up. If nobody wants to speak, I could ask anybody that is for this, please raise your hand so the councilors will know that you're in favor of it. Okay.
Do you wish to take names?
You have a right to remain silent.
Do you wish to take names for the record, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll have a sign-up sheet going around, so make sure you sign it before you leave. Okay. So with that, those are all our proponents. Hearing, any others before I close that portion? The proponent portion is closed. Is there anybody opposed? Is there anybody opposed? Is there anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. And again, I remind our councilors that this will be going into our zoning subcommittee, which will be chaired by Counselor Redden, and so please keep your comments short and sweet.
Mr. President.
I already have Counselor...
It is my Ward.
I thought it was Ward...
It's Ward 1.
I'm sorry. Then I will give it to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to the council, Wednesday night, this past Wednesday, they actually had a neighborhood meeting that they sent letters out to the residents. Unfortunately, not many came, there was zero against it. There's actually someone from Ward 4 that came in favor of it. But with that being said, the concept that I see, the positives, there are no negatives that I can see. They have off-street parking for all to help. The drop-off point is going to be on that side of the street only. They're going to have 100 to 120 kids off the street. To me, and I've been an advocate for this for 20 years I've been on the council in the past, that there's nothing better you can do for kids than give them something to do after school. There's no question, you look at statistics across the whole country, is when the most mischief and evil things happen, is from after school until parents get home from work. And that's getting pregnant, that's breaking an entry, drugs, you name it. There's nothing better you can do to keep kids off the street. And this is what that does. Besides the positive of a building you're looking at, the gateway coming in through Chelsea, coming off the Parkway, exactly what the mayor wanted to do when he ran for mayor, is reelect Broadway. It's the very first building you see. You can see it's a beautiful-looking building. The director butter is in favor of this. There are basically no butters except for him unless you go around the corner down the side street. So I see nothing but positive things. And if you look into what these people, like they said, they have done in the past, their track record with kids, it's second to none. I mean, they're teaching these kids things they should teach them, and the main thing is they're off the streets. I can't emphasize that enough. I cannot emphasize that enough. I remember when the federal government had night basketball. That was a great thing, keep kids off the street. Keeps them watching them. Dan Conley's program, kids that play basketball outside the police station, one of the best programs we have. Why? They're active, they're doing positive things. Keeps kids away from negative things. I don't see anybody... there's hardly a person that raises a hand negative against it. The thing I'm going to ask you, Mr. President, is, I know we're not going to vote this tonight, but it'll be an injustice to wait till April 8th to vote on this. We're looking to get these kids into school in September. There's no way they can get this thing accomplished if we wait till April 8th to vote this thing. So I know we have two more meetings before, you know, a couple off, so I would ask that you send it to committee, have a committee meeting, and vote this at least by the meetings we have in March.
You're right, Counselor. We have a meeting on the 4th and the 11th.
I'm not going to go on forever here. Like I said, we do have another meeting on this committee. We have two more meetings, correct. But I mean, if you look at the facade of the building, they're gutting the inside out. That's where the meeting was held last Wednesday. They're cutting it right out. So the inside, it's almost like a rebuild without being a rebuild, but I think people will be proud seeing that, the first thing coming to Revere, then what's there. Now, if somebody wants to bring a negative up, drop-off kids pick up, there's something going to go in that building, remember that. You know, sometimes you vote something down, and people forget there's something else that can go in that building. that could go in that building that could bring traffic, could bring whatever it brings, a business. But it was a business, it is a business, and it's basically looking for a little more room down there, basically to cater to more kids. And I'm asking this council to look positive in this and hope we can get this thing voted soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zimbudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I just have a couple of small questions of the proprietor, I guess. I take it you have a facility right now?
No, we do not.
You don't? Okay. When you had a facility, you're a nonprofit, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Did you have an in lieu of taxes agreement with your other property?
We, this will be our, we have programs, we have 18 programs in six cities. All of our programs presently are housed in public schools. We partner with public schools in East Boston, Everett, Peabody, Salem, and which one did I forget? Winthrop. This will be our first owner-occupied facility in the state.
Okay, so the answer to my question, I guess, is no.
Correct.
Okay. I guess then I'll ask you, will you consider doing an in lieu of tax agreement with the city if you are granted this special permit to have the 120-student facility?
I guess I would just, if I may interrupt.
Anybody wants to answer it?
I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Want to speak into the microphone, sir?
By an agreement in lieu of taxes, what the terms of that agreement are?
I'll make it, I'll make it simple. A nonprofit such as this, I believe this falls under Dover Amendment, is that correct?
That's our argument, yes.
Okay, so that's your, so that means that you could come in and pay no taxes, is that correct?
Possibly, yes.
Right, so I'm asking, would you be amenable to an in lieu of tax agreement? It's a simple question. It's not a, it's not difficult. It's, I'm just trying to get a feel for where we're going here, and that, I'm not saying that's going to prejudice my opinion on whether this is a good use or not.
My confusion is, in lieu of taxes, what in lieu of taxes?
Well, in other words, we have many nonprofits that don't have to pay taxes. We make agreements that they will pay a fee in lieu of taxes because they're not obligated by law to pay taxes. But entities such as North Suffolk or things like that, we have agreements that they may pay 60% of what would be the taxes, or, I'm just throwing a figure out, but that's my point. And I'm just simply asking, would you be amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Corrigio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an excellent choice for the city of Revere. It's all about helping children, and this is what it's about. If we can take children off the street, further their education, do anything with, any type of education is helpful. The only concern I had about was parking, and Councilor Penta answered my question about the off-seat parking. And I would agree with a lot of what Councilor Penta said, comments that we do need this building, and it's out helping children. So the only question I had was about the off-street parking. Is there enough parking spaces?
Actually, we'll be going before the zoning board of appeals later this week for variance on the off-street parking requirements. What we're proposing is a transportation plan, and if I may just have Phil or Larry come up and just briefly explain what this transportation plan is that we're proposing, which would, in our opinion, eliminate a lot of the motor vehicle traffic.
I know we were asking questions tonight, which I try to keep it at a minimum, so if you can just keep it short, you know, because all this is going to come up again at the public, at the committee meeting.
Lawrence Keegan, 27 Tanglewood Lane, Salem, Massachusetts. The answer directly to the question is to stagger when the children arrive and when the children leave. We would definitely arrange with, we outsource our transportation, and the transportation would be allowed to come up with routes that would allow the vans to drop off the children at a staggered time, so that as little as possible, this would not in any way impede any of the traffic moving on Route 107. At the end of the day, as the day goes on, the children get picked up by their parents. We have done some studies, I won't take your time on that, but we show that during the course of the day from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., a lot of the children leave with their parents early. It's not like school where at 6:00 p.m. you'll see 120 children leaving the school with a lineup of cars and parents waiting to pick up their child. During the day, it's staggered leaving so that by 5:00, 5:15, we have lost through parent pickup over 60% of the school population.
Mr. President, just a point of information.
Counselor, I'll accept your point of information, but I have other councilors that want to speak also.
Very relative, like what Councilor Corrigio said, I don't want to be misstated. The parking space they have off-street is for the help. They have nine people working, they have 11 spaces, so it's adequate for the help. The people picking up would have to pick up on the street, pick up and go, pick up and go. And these are eight to 13-year-olds, they're not 14, 15, 16, 17.
So noted, Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could just make one last comment, when we were down in the other building on Broadway closer to the fire station, we didn't have any problems at all, and we didn't have any off-street parking. And we never once got any complaints from, whether it's citizens or municipal people that work for the city, we had no problems at all because of that staggering of the way they leave. I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Councilor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few questions. What is, I think you mentioned the maximum number of clients, and I want to be certain about that, would be about 120 students?
That's correct.
Is that what was anticipated?
Yes.
And of that 120, what number or perhaps what percentage would be from the city of Revere, your clients would be from the city of Revere?
I think that's something that I'd certainly...
Well, our intention is to service the children of the city of Revere, so that would, is our priority and main intention here. We feel like right now we have enough children, I think we have 85 today at this present time with the waitlist. So we truly believe that we'll be able to service Revere as our clientele.
And of those 85, what, how many of them are from Revere?
100% right now. Yep, 100%. 100%.
And you anticipate it'll be close to 100%?
Yes.
When you, if and when you get up and running?
Yes, the only exception to that, we do have a contract with the Department of Children and Families to service children who are with a supportive contract. These are abused and neglected children, and sometimes if there, another community locally does not have space for those children, the department may ask us to service that child while that child's family's caseload is open. So that may be the exception to the rule. The rest of the children that we will serve will be from the city. This is going to be part of, this is truly a city initiative, in my opinion. It will be Revere's program, Revere's building, and we want to make sure that we can demonstrate to the city that the children that come to us under our care are going to be growing and productive citizens that will be able to give back, and so that's our main intention.
What do you anticipate the hours of operation will be?
From school dismissal until 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, we'd be open from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on school vacations in summertime, and we'll be open on early release days. Whenever school is out, we'll be open because right now, I would say almost 98% of the children that we serve, their families are working families. So when school is closed, we open. This year and every year, we close only 16 days a year, and those are the major holidays that we close for. And that's per our contract with the Department of Early Education and Care.
Okay, so you anticipate that your main hours of operation will be between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m.?
2:00 to 6:00 p.m., yes, correct.
And when do you expect the highest volume of pickup traffic would be during those hours?
That's in your packet here. We actually did a study on this.
We just got that, I'm hoping you'll tell me.
So I would say, if you look at this, we have, 27% is between 5:30 and 6:00, 25% between 5:00 and 5:30, 19% between 4:30 and 5:00, 14% between 4:00 and 4:30, 8% between 3:30 and 4:00, and 7% between 3:00 and 3:30. And this was based on a survey, survey size of 80, 85 children per day. Most recently, we just did this within the last two months for the purpose of this meeting.
And lastly, would you be willing to agree as part of the granting of the special permit to some percentage of children being from Revere in the, in the program?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just looking over the information now that was submitted to me, and I see probably the support of over 160 families in this city that support this type of operation. As you know, prior to my coming on the council, I was involved in recreational services in the city for over 20 years, and one of the constant cries that I heard in that capacity was, why don't we have more programs in the city for kids? Why don't we do more to keep kids off the streets? And I can tell you now, looking over this particular program, I would find it very, very difficult not to support this when it comes out of committee. We can never, ever do enough for the children of this city to set them in the right direction and keep them off of our streets and guide them through the, those early years which lead into the teens. So again, Mr. President, I would find it very difficult not to support this, and I look at the fact that they're doing work in six or seven other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, and no problems there. They run a fine operation in those cities and towns. So again, Mr. President, I would look for a favorable report out of the zoning subcommittee on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that this program is absolutely tremendous, tremendous, without question needed within the community, and I agree with, not, not to go through all of the reasons why, but I agree with the Ward 1 Council. Mr. Penta, look at the kids, they need a place to go. I know I've got three grandchildren, the father works, my daughter works, and it's hard to, you know, place the children. And we have one going over to Pope John in the morning. He's three years old, he spends a matter of four or five hours over there. And are you going to be offering something like this as time goes on?
Early childhood?
Yes.
It's something that we can entertain as we move forward. Oh, sorry.
At the present time, we're licensed to be a school-age provider, which means we can service kindergarten through grade eight. However, this is something that if time, if we find a need, then we would be more than happy to service preschool-age children. Yes.
There's an awful lot of private ones within the community. I know that at Everett-Pope John, they cater to the work and the parents who are working mostly within the school system in Everett in Revere, and they take those children from like 7:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, and it's a service, and then your program would enter into it at 4:00 or whatever hour. So you've got some dead time that could probably be utilized.
That's a good point.
I think it's absolutely fabulous. I think it's without question needed for Revere. You know, nowadays husbands working, wife is working, what do we do with the children? You know, and now they have a reputable place to go to and utilize their services. Councilor Zimbudo brought up an issue as far as compensation. Is that, would that still be on the table for further discussion?
In lieu of taxes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, welcome.
Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. As recently as this weekend, in the Boston Globe, there was an article in reference to female surgeons and people in the workforce that are in need of help, and, because it's somewhat unfairness because the male goes to work barring none, and here's these very trained and well-educated surgeons and doctors who are females are put at a disadvantage somewhat because of small children within the household and for nowhere for them to go. So this is a great opportunity. The only thing, and I thought it was brought up by Councilor Riordan, which is a very, very valid point, is the proximity of this location to Chelsea, and we want to make certain that the good neighbors, our good friends from Chelsea don't take advantage of the good people of Revere and try to place all their children at this location because it's going to be a very, very hotly contested area because there are many people within our community who need such a service. And if you're looking for help, I can qualify. Councilor Haas, he tells me all the time when I ask him to go to lunch that he has to babysit and he does, so he's qualified, he can do this type of thing. So I think that, I think this is a great program for our community, and I think that we're here this evening, and it's all supported by Revere residents, and we're taking the initiative, you are bringing it forward to this council. We represent the folks of Revere, and we want to make certain that the people of Revere get the opportunity to place their children there first. And, you know, we're not picking and choosing, we're just protecting our own kids, and so that would be a very, very valid point in my, that we meet some sort of a written agreement so there'd be no mistake about it, within the next four or five years, someone will come back and say, well, you know, this is what you have to do, and if it's part of your bylaws, then that would be a great thing for our community. And I think that your project is going to be unbelievable. Well received. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Well, being a part of the education program at Salem State, we work a lot with Salem Public Schools, and I've heard nothing but good things out of Salem about the program, so I'm excited to have it in Revere, and I think it'll be a great, great addition to our public school system now, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future. So thank you for coming, and thank you for bearing with all of our questions tonight.
Councilor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am happy to hear about you guys being amenable to a payment in lieu of taxes. That's, that was a great idea by Councilor Zimbudo. I am also hopeful to hear that you'd be amenable to including a percentage of Revere kids. I think that's important. You're obviously filling a need that, that I think the city needs. One question I do have is about your work with the public school. Is there any type of relationship that you'll have with Revere Public Schools, or will there be kind of a, kind of a communication between, between you guys and the superintendent's office and some of what they're, what they're looking to do?
We have had, in 1998, we began our work here in the city, and that was, we were invited in by Carol Ty, who was the superintendent at that time, and it was a unanimous vote by the Revere Public School Committee to have us work in the school buildings. And since that time, we have established, I think, a very good relationship with the school department. We sit on the Revere After-School Partnership, and we sit on a number of other committees when asked, and yes, and I think that's the, that's the value, the value of partnerships is that the child is only going to grow even greater, and we can support families in a much better way when we leverage and collaborate resources. So it's my intention to continue to work with the public schools in making sure that the children that we are educating during the out-of-school time hours, that what we're doing in terms of expanding their learning truly aligns with what the school day is doing, so that there's a real mash and collaboration and a seamless day.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, just two things that I have in my mind. You talked about the dropping off of the kids. Are you going to have a specific drop-off zone in front of the building, and are there meters in front of the building now?
Actually, if I may address that. We're proposing one of the spots on, in the parking lot to be designated as a drop-off point for the, their vans going to be coming into the site and dropping off children. They pick the children up at school, transport them over to the site, and the children will be dropped off. The, so that is to address, I guess, the drop-off. In terms of picking up, as Mr. Keegan was explaining, there's a staggered pickup between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m., and it's designated here on the chart. Cars will come. There's, I see at least four spots in the front of the building. There's, I, I see at least four spots in the front of the building, on, on the street, and also four spots along the Revere Beach Parkway roadway that lies adjacent to the building. There's a curb cut there, but I guess if we could put a curb alongside there, that would create another four spots as well. What we intend to do is petition the, I guess, the traffic, the traffic committee to see if, if perhaps they could put signage up that would limit or restrict parking during certain periods of the day to, to keep the traffic flow moving, maybe limited to ten minutes from three p.m. to six p.m., so that just for simply pickup. Parents come, pick up their child, they have to enter the building to pick up their child. It's not something that the child just runs out the door and runs to the car. They have to sign their child out. And that should only take approximately five minutes. There's no reason why a parent can't just get out of their car, sign the child out, and leave. And again, this is a staggered pickup during a period of three hours. So our, our belief is that the, the traffic flow will be a continuous flow throughout that three-hour period.
Okay, cool.
Nothing which would, we don't think would impact.
And I understand, and that, that is something the traffic commission will have to address, you know, whether there are meters in front there and the timing and, because, you know, it is some kind of a loss of revenue if the meters are kind of shut off for a certain amount of time, for that couple hours.
Can I, may I speak to that too, just briefly? Just briefly?
Sure.
So we have, because of our contract with the Department of Early Education and KIA, who, that pays for children from low-income families, the department also pays for them to get a ride from school to us and from the after-school program to home if they need that key, that service. What will happen is, which is happening now, is the van will come and pick up six children, and then they go home. So, and then the van, and we, we work it now in other cities, so that it's a very smooth transition. So the children go, six in the van, and they go home. The next group, six in the van, they go home. So it's not, and then we can't deny families who want to pick up their child the right to do that. But a lot of times, parents will choose, they'll elect to take that transportation van home for convenience. And it's also funded through the department to support working families. So it helps with the traffic flow.
And I understand that, but, you know, my concern is if there are meters in front of the building?
Yes.
And if there are cars parked there?
I agree.
You know, sometime during the day. So that's something you'll have to work out with the traffic commission, see what they'll, you know, they'll allow for you to do. And as far as the side of the building where the curb cut is?
Yes.
That would be terrific if you eliminated that curb cut, you know?
Make it.
That's something you could do and with the proper permits. But that is a DCR road, so you'll have to address it with them on that, on that side of the building, as part of the Revere Beach Parkway.
Right.
With that, I have nothing else to say. If the councils have anything to say.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, sir, you're barred from this place.
Thank you. Thank you, Ira.
We know you. We've been there, done that.
Listen, Len Piaz is a longtime resident of Revere, and I would like to say I've been an employee of, of after-school program. This is my fourth year. And a lot has been said this evening about the children, which is obviously extremely important. But equally important, and I would like to address the, the, the employees, if we call it that, the instructors, the, the young people that work there, dedicated, and some not quite so young, dedicated individuals. They do a terrific job. I've seen it, and, and I strongly confirm that this is going to be a very worthwhile project for the city of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. With that, this will go to the zoning subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman, may I just submit the names of the proponents who are present this evening? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number five. This is unfinished business, communication from attorney Douglas Arico relative to Village Court condos.
We'll have a one-minute recess while we kind of clear the room, okay? Back in session, Rick. Thank you. Okay, who is Mr. Arico? Name and address for the record, sir. Push the button on the box in the bottom, and you don't have to hold it.
Okay. Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Douglas Arico. I'm an attorney from Braintree, and I represent the Village Court condominium. The reason we're here tonight, and first of all, I want to thank you for, for hearing us tonight. With me tonight is Elizabeth Kadowski, who's the property manager for the condominium. I just want to clarify for the record why we're here. We're here in particular about the apartment proposal for Across the Street. And we realize that that was approved and dealt with last September. Appeal period has passed. It's not our intent to try to appeal it. That was never our intent. The reason we wanted to come before you tonight, and I wrote a brief letter and sent a petition that had been signed by a number of our unit owners, was simply to talk about parking and to try to emphasize, I guess, and give a little bit of our own import, input onto the parking issues in the neighborhood. It is, it is an important problem at this condominium. And in particular, in the decision that you rendered, you did put something in there. It seems like you recognized that there was a, a parking issue there. And in particular, there was one condition in the decision, condition number eight, that talks about Ward Street and Macoba Street. And in it, you, you stated that the way to make this project work, if it does go forward, is to try to reconfigure Macoba Street so that there's a left-hand turn lane and a right-hand turn lane. And as part of that, there's going to be potentially some on-street parking that's going to be lost there. Our people at Village Court really need that on-street parking, because it's, and Elizabeth will say a few words when I'm done, and I'll, I'll, I'll be brief, about the parking situation. But we just, we just wanted to emphasize how very important that is to us. And also, since it does seem to contemplate that as the project moves forward, the proponent is going to have to come forward with some, some proposal to either preserve that on-street parking or to replace it somewhere else, we just want to make sure that, you know, who we are, we're here, we're interested, and we would like to be part of that process.
And you understand that right now, it's beyond us?
Yes.
You know, so this is something that we put in the, in the special permit that forces them to work with you.
Yep.
And if they don't work with you, then you come back to us.
Then, right, right.
And we make appropriate, or take the appropriate actions to, if they don't work with you, then we pull their special permit for noncompliance.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, just so you know that, you know, you, you can talk to us from now until next Christmas, and there's nothing we can do unless they violate the permit.
Right.
Mr. President, point of information.
Sir, point of information.
Earlier this year, I met with the condo association and the trustees, and that's why we're having this conversation this evening, is to reaffirm the commitment that's placed in this article, that, that the future ongoing proceedings, that this council be notified that they're in partnership with condominium association and Village Courts, condo association. And so that, just to bring us up to date, the trustees thought it would be a good idea for the presentation to be made for this council, to make everybody, if they weren't on the council at that time, remember and go back in the file and get the documentation to say that this is what took place. And in fact, we do have record of that, and I didn't want to interrupt. I just wanted to, I just wanted to give the president an insight as to what took place.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Councilor.
Excellent. Thank you. Elizabeth, do you have anything to add about the parking?
I just, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, that it would be up to us to work with, you know, that company to make sure that this is, this actually happens. How would they be contacting us? Because, you know, obviously, at the point that we were contacted in regards to the permit being granted, it was long after that period that we had to make any appeal. You know, communication is sent generically to the complex, which doesn't have an office that receives information from the city.
If, if it were I, I would take this special permit, which I'm sure you have a copy of it, send them an official certified letter advising them of this particular section, that they have to work with you on the parking situation on Ward Street and Macoba Street. And then that kind of kicks off, you know, you're a legal person, so. But that's, that's what I would say, that you start it off that way. Send them an official letter. You know, they're still in the construction format phase, so I'm sure they can make other adjustments accordingly.
Okay. I think that the association just really was concerned that this would get too far without their concerns being addressed, as happened when BJ's was built. Part of the parking that was utilized by, or was on Village Court property was taken to build the sidewalks that's there, and we already don't have enough parking to accommodate the owners that live there. Taking any more parking away from them is just not going to help.
I would send that letter out immediately.
Okay.
You know, and put them on notice.
Yeah, nor, normally what I would do in the first instance, if they, if they had, if the proponents had an attorney, I would contact him or her. I can't tell from the decision itself, but perhaps I could contact the city clerk or something.
The sheriff clerk has all the information.
All that information, okay.
Mr. President.
Councilor Zimbuto.
Let me ask you, sir, were you at the public hearing for the special permit?
No, I, I had no knowledge of it.
Because that would have been the, the abudders were all notified. That would have been the appropriate time.
So again, the, the point that I made earlier is, is that the notification was sent to the building, which doesn't, so my office represents the association, and the notice was sent to the building where there's no mailbox, no office. So the notice was just left in the entryway. We weren't made aware of it until after that hearing already happened.
I see. Because I know we've had other issues in that area, and residents show up, so, from, from those buildings. So I, I don't know how it.
I can't comment on that.
I don't know how it slipped through the cracks, because our purpose of notifying the abudders, so something like this is addressed during the public hearing stage, so that it could have been in writing then, if, if someone was up here to address it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Understood. Councilor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing is I support the Ward Council, Councilor Guanasso, and I will support the association. Whatever is necessary to make the parking feasible for you people, I will do on this council. Whatever the issue is, as far as any ordinance or any change or anything, I will abide to accommodate the best I can to the association and the buildings there. Thank you.
Right. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to add to what has already been said about the public hearing and everything, yeah, that, that was obvious. We had, the horse had already left the barn. However, when I read the decision, I saw that it was okay. You know, it was okay, because when you granted the permit, you already provided for a later review. So I just wanted to, you know, take, take you up on the, on the opportunity to come forward and say, who I am, we're, we're here, and we would like to be involved in that next step.
It's so noted. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, that special permit is a legal document.
Right.
So I think what we have to do is, you have to correspond to the address on record.
Yep.
To notify them that there is a clause in there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And the city council, not one councilor, all councils will support you in your endeavor without question.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Councilor Guanasso, last call.
Yeah, I just think, Mr. President, that this conversation's taking place again. Because of the trustees contacting me, we had that meeting and, and brought, and I, and I suggested to them that they get legal representation when we go forward. We put in there the safeguards to protect the Village Condominium Association. So that part of the project is already in place.
Right.
So now, we just have to be, do our due diligence and keep our minds and, and thoughts in that location. And as soon as we get some sort of sighting that work or something's taking place, contact, contact the council and, and make us aware of what this is, so that we can prevent anything from happening in the future that will be detrimental to the, the upkeeping and the goodwill of, of the condominium association.
You're right. Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We wish you good luck.
Okay.
Judy, take care. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number six, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Councilor Redden.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon at approximately five p.m., the zoning subcommittee met to consider petition C-13-01, petition by Charles Lightbody, Eight Revere Street LLC, Eight Revere Street, Revere Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to construct a seventeen-by-forty-two-point, forty-two-and-a-half-foot, one-story addition to an existing non-conforming structure and non-conforming use on Lot 30 at Eight Revere St., Revere, Massachusetts. This came to us with some recommendations from Site Plan Review, which were as follows: The proposed one-story addition shall be used for storage only. Two, a landscape buffer zone shall be provided along the rear of the property between the parking lot and budding residential properties. This buffer zone shall be planted with evergreens minimum of six feet along the full width of the rail property line in accordance with a landscape screening plan approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. And three, the plan shall be reviewed and approved by the fire department prior to the issuance of a building permit. The petitioner was here before the zoning subcommittee, and after a brief discussion, the zoning subcommittee reported this out favorably, with some exceptions to the Site Plan Review. The first paragraph of Site Plan Review recommendation, proposed one-story addition shall be used for storage only. The petitioner had actually asked that a storage and an office be the use, proposed use. This was reported out with that condition, office and storage use only. Number two, Site Plan Review's recommendation was not included in the recommendation from zoning subcommittee. And paragraph three, a plan shall be reviewed and approved by the fire department prior to the issuance of building permit, of course, was, was included in the recommendation by, by the zoning subcommittee. It was unanimous recommendation on that matter, and I would suggest that we put it forward for a vote this evening, based on, based on those conditions.
Thank you, Councilor. So the Site Plan Review, if I may correct, Site Plan Review recommendation is not included in this at all?
It, not, not so. The paragraph one of Site Plan Review's recommendation, which will, which is that it shall be used for storage only, has been expanded to... for storage only, has been expanded to, as the petitioner originally requested, storage and office only. So no, in other words, no facility other than a storage and office only. Paragraph two has been, not been recommended by the zoning subcommittee, and paragraph three of Site Plan Review recommendation has been included in our, the subcommittee's recommendation.
Okay. On the acceptance of the zoning subcommittee, roll call.
Shall the relief requested be granted, subject to the recommendations as reported by Counselor Ridden, for special permit C-13-01 on the application of Charles Lightbody for Eight Revere Street, Revere, Mass.? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ridden.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the recommendations by Counselor Ridden. Calendar item number seven. Report of the appointment subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier today, the appointment subcommittee met, and we had three items on the agenda. The first was 13-031, Joseph McHugh as a constable for the city of Revere. 13-034, Henry Mancini is a member of the Revere Housing Authority. And 13-048, Lauren Devilla as a constable for the city of Revere was not in attendance, and that individual will be placed on the table until the next meeting. The council met and subcommittee, and we voted unanimously for the two applicants that were there. So I ask that this council vote favorably on their application.
On acceptance of the committee and approval of the recommendations, roll call.
Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ridden.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number eight. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Anthony Del Vecchio of Adenell Road to the planning board.
Appointment subcommittee.
We have one late communication from Site Plan Review relative to the recommendations for C-13-01.
Loom favorable approach. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business, we have a motion adjourned. Our next meeting will be March 4th. Meeting adjourned.